Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the January 28th meeting of the Fuller Real City Council at seven o'clock. If you'll stand for the pledge and a moment of silence, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item, our first item is public comment in accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, a new public comment that is made on items that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by city council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation or comment will be made by the city council. Each person providing a public comment will be limited to three minutes. Tracy Dock.
Thank you for having me. I'm just up here just to be the mosquito that doesn't go away. We have our opening ceremonies, or they're not really ceremonies, but our opening, season opener is February 15th. That's a Saturday. We will start at 8:30. First pitch is kind of around nine o'clock. I would love to invite those of you that can make it out. And we are, you know, like I said, we've got about 475 kids that are playing this season. We've got ages four U, so two-year-olds all the way up to 14 essentially. And those are coming from Round Rock Manor, Hutto, Flugerville, Austin. We've got one or two, I think, from Dell Valley. Like, it's not just Flugerville, but it's also a representation of Flugerville. I'm working on different avenues to try to get us different funding, but I would love to be able to sit down and speak to anybody. I know that the board would love to be able to speak to anybody to see if there's a way that we can kind of get connected, to see what we can do. I feel like I'm kind of at a roadblock, like I don't really know what else to do, but I'm not going away. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. See you next time. All right. I have a proclamation. During, excuse me, during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economy, culture, spiritual and political development. In 1976, Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month and is now celebrated all over North America. Black History Month is a time where all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the past successes and challenges of black communities and to look to the future to ensure freedom, equity, and inclusiveness. I proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in the city of Flugerville. I call upon all citizens to celebrate Black History Month, to study the history of African-Americans, and to honor the national and local legacy of African-Americans who have made significant contributions throughout history. Our guest that was to receive this proclamation is not here, so we have in his stead Ms. Ursia and the most honorable Ms. Coaksom that will be here to receive this proclamation.
Come on, first lady. You were here. Surprise.
Yeah, y'all are crazy. You know we're gonna hear about this later.
I know. I know.
I'm just telling you. Don't repeal that.
...our consent agenda. You have three minutes to pull an I from the agenda.
I would like to pull five I, five M, and five T.
P?
T as in Tom.
P as in Tom, okay.
Should've got three seconds.
All right. I have items five I, five M, and five T pulled from the consent agenda. Five A is approving an ordinance on first and final reading with a caption reading and ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, adopting the First Amendment to the FY25 budget for the city of Flugerville and providing an effective date. Five B, approving an ordinance on first reading with a caption reading and ordinance authorizing the lease of city property located along Kingston Lacy Boulevard, Flugerville, providing cumulative repealer and severability clauses, providing for open meeting and establishing an effective date. Five C, approving an ordinance on first reading with a caption reading and ordinance levying special assessment for and apporting the cost of certain improvement to property in and for the Metalark Preserve Public Improvement District, fixing a charge and lien against all properties within the district and the owners thereof, providing for the manner and method of collection of such assessments, making a finding of special benefit to property in the district and the realty owners thereof, approving a service and assessment plan, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Five D, approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading and ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, Code of Ordinances Title VII, Traffic Code Chapter 71, Parking Regulations, Section 71.05, Parking Prohibited in Certain Designated Areas by Establishing an Additional No Parking Zone on 10th Street, Providing for Violation of Section 71.05 as a misdemeanor and a fine amount not to exceed $500, Providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative for repealing all ordinances to the extent they are in conflict, Providing for Severability and Providing an Effective Date. Five E, approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading and ordinance authorizing the lease of city properties located at 11753 New Suite in Flugerville, Providing Cumulative Repealer and Severability Clauses, Providing for Open Meeting and Establishing an Effective Date. Again, items five I, five M, and five T have been pulled from the consent agenda. All items remaining may be acted upon in a single motion.
A move to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Excuse me, I was remiss earlier in public comment. There are a couple of special people here today that are representing the Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, whatever scouts that are selling cookies today. And if you, these caramel delights are wonderful, by the way. So if you're wanting to partake of any pastries, cookies, they're in the back waiting to serve you. Six dollars a box. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I forgot.
That's inflation. Remember, it was two dollars?
At least a four dollars online.
That's a few years old.
Catch all those people leaving, they got six bucks. All right. Our next item is public hearing and ordinance, six A, conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance on first reading with the caption reading and ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending ordinance number 1545-22-04-26 for the city of Flugerville, Texas, as amended by amending the city of Flugerville Code of Ordinances Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 153, Planning by amending the Aspire Flugerville 2040 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map found in Chapter 3 to be known as the 2025 Downtown FLUM Amendment, Providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, Providing for severability, and Providing an Effective Date. Emily?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is a comprehensive plan amendment, an amendment to the Future Land Use Plan or FLUM as sometimes referred to. We don't see these very often. This is the first one, first map amendment, I believe, since the plan was adopted in 2022. And just as, since it's not something we see very often, is that when we look at land use designations from a comprehensive plan level, we're looking at a very high level, 100,000-foot view. So we don't really go down to the parcel level at that time. Amendments to a future land use map do not change the zoning designation on the property. I'll show you some differences here in just a minute in a slide. This is really looking at the long-term designation for properties and the appropriateness of those, and kind of helping to deliver the vision of the council as those properties develop over time. This particular request came about from a single property owner wanting to develop their property for retail and personal services within the downtown area, but the designation on the map showed it as residential. As we're starting to look parcel by parcel, we thought, let's make sure we look around all of our downtown and say, are all these parcels adequately addressed in the future land use map? So with that, you see a variety of parcels here, seven in the downtown core, and then 11 in our transitional compatibility zone. We'll identify those zones here in just a moment. And it's really updating those from suburban residential designation to mixed-use neighborhood, which is the majority of them, with the exception of one, which is the parcel to the north adjacent to the church. That's where we designate places of worship. So here's the downtown district overlay. Those transitional zones are the hashed areas that you see there along Hall Street and then along Walnut and Willbarger. And the properties that we're looking at for the future land use map designation are circled there in the red, which really are those transitional zones within the downtown area. Here shows the future land use map versus our zoning. So on the left-hand side, you see the future land use map, suburban residential, all yellow, where over time, those various properties have changed hands or been rezoned, some of them are now office, because you're starting to see that transition. A variety of them between Willbarger and Walnut along Railroad have been rezoned to retail. And so truly that high level getting into zoning later down the road. Some of the future land use categories that you see on the right, the kind of the, or the left, excuse me, the suburban residential designation in the comprehensive plan, really intended for 100% residential. I think in these areas, we don't really intend for that, but we really think of those more as mixed-use neighborhoods. That's where you see in past council actions, the retail office uses in these areas. And so that's the updated designation for a mix of residential housing types compatible with office, retail, and commercial, also promoting that walkability and pedestrian-friendly experience, which we want for our downtown area. The other one related to the places of worship, again, is institutional, as I stated, intended for civic, social, public, and private uses. Here's just another kind of closer view of those compatibility zones, the church within those areas, difference between the designation and the zoned areas. And then as we kind of get along more towards the core, going to the mixed-use neighborhood And then here is along Hall Street, some of those properties already zoned, two of the three properties in this amendment are zoned office and retail. This area is in our neighborhood district, kind of our central district, and then, and kind of our aspirational actions and why these changes are appropriate for the change to the future land use map. This provides consistent, this amendment is recommended, it provides consistency with the zoning as well as the transitional zones established in our downtown district overlay. It is, please note that there's no changes to the property or zoning. We did contact all the property owners, let them know the difference between the comprehensive plan and a zoning. They're welcome to use their property as they see fit today. If they want to change it, they would come forward to a zoning amendment that would come before council. Staff recommends approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval earlier this month. Happy to answer any questions.
So Emily, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So if, I think you presented this correctly, that those seven lots there right on the corner of First and Willbarger, you said are residential?
They're in the future land use map today as residential.
So what was it that State Farm came to us years ago to get an exception or something to be able to, is that business in a residential district?
It is today in our update, in the comprehensive plan. That happened prior to that, which we looked at, we looked at kind of the downtown area a little bit differently. We were kind of looking at nodes, and so it made it appropriate then. We changed that philosophy a little bit, though, with the updated comprehensive plan, when we were looking more at districts and had this designation there. So it was appropriate at the time to rezone it to that. Again, when we, when we looked at the downtown district with the, with the aspire plan, it was really that high level and didn't go down to the parcels.
So it got rezoned?
It's, I'm sorry?
It got rezoned?
It did get rezoned.
Back to residential?
No, sir. No, sir. It's still zoned office today. This doesn't change any of the zoning. It's that high-level designation. It puts, it puts the comprehensive plan in alignment with the current zoning of the property.
Well, I understand that part. I'm just thinking you have office in residential.
In a residential aspirational area.
Aspirational.
Aspirational.
This designates our intended, that may or may not be residential in the future. This would, that would typically become something like neighborhood services?
Right. That's right. And so when we come forward to you, and we're talking about zoning, should align with your comprehensive plan. And so when we come with a request, like the property owner at the corner of Willbarger and First will come forward to you in the next month or so, it's to ensure that the comprehensive plan aligns with that request. And so here, Mayor, because of the change in the comprehensive plan and that philosophy looks a little backwards.
Yeah, which corner?
Willbarger, yeah, Willbarger and First. It's the southwest, southwest corner.
South.
About three lots north of the State Farm property.
Who is the owner?
It's the Kearns.
Who?
The Kearns own that property.
Okay.
You'll see that, I think, in February or March meetings.
So take me back a couple of slides here, because I'm trying to understand.
I think this might be one.
Okay, so there, so the properties there, not, not the ones we're talking about now, but on Willbarger, where you have that kind of triangle-looking thing on East Walnut and, and North Railroad. All that is residential, correct?
It's residential in the comprehensive plan, but it's currently zoned retail.
Right.
And that's in the current comprehensive plan, or is that, how is that changing with the proposed amendment?
So that's changing to be the commercial mixed-use, which would put the zone, the zoning, which is shown on the right, in compliance, they would then speak to each other.
So everything that's outlined there on the left-hand side of the screen is, is changing to mixed-use?
That's right.
So you're just doing what we've been doing at piecemeal, for the better lack of term of the language, because I remember explicitly, we were talking about the State Farm property, you'd mentioned in the, in the presentation that we're, we're looking at this anyway, and we feel like, okay, we need to reevaluate what's occurred there and see what we're gonna be moving forward. You know, and if I recall, didn't, didn't they get neighbors or somebody else to like, say, hey, listen, this is, like, we, we looked at the usage, how would it affect the neighborhood? And how that would work? Because, you know, my always concern is that, okay, you've got these, I mean, legacy families, let's be honest, that usually, you know, lived in these homes right there. But I haven't heard too much from people complaining about, as you, I like how you put it, neighborhood usage, you know, what these properties, what they actually reflect, even like, we, we limit the parking and what else, and some of their aspects of this. So you're just saying, okay, instead of doing this piecemeal, let's look at this as a whole, and the only thing that's really changing is the designation. But those are already have been things that have been commercial anyway. We're saying, you know, neighborhood mixed-use instead.
That's right. That's right. And so we're trying to provide that consistency, and I thought, I think a lot of that goes to the many conversations we had when we established the transitional zones in downtown. Lots of conversation with those property owners. That's why I think there's not red flags going up, because that's what is, that's what they anticipate as well. And so they can, they can live there and work there, and it just gives those future opportunities to articulate what we want to see in downtown, and allows that to happen more smoothly once they get to the zoning process.
So do you anticipate, and again, when you say mixed-use, the first thing that comes to my mind is multifamily.
Uh huh.
And so I'm imagining that that may be something that will be landing there. Again, I'm just speaking out loud here.
Sure.
Because that's the easiest thing to do.
Yeah, potentially, but then in our, in our district, and I have to go back to the specific details in the downtown district overlay, that's where it really talks about that vertical mixed-use, getting that commercial on the first floor, some more density or multifamily on the floors above it. What we're really seeing in those transitional zones, though, which are that, kind of that area really, that I showed that were hatched, are requests for personal services, offices, smaller retails, and so that, that's currently what we're seeing for, for those particular pieces.
And you mentioned that this puts the future land use map in compliance with their, in alignment with the, with the zoning that we've got on some of those parcels. And I like to think this is, I always say disappointment is unmet expectations. This sets an expectation in the future land use plan so that when people are looking at, hey, I want to, I want to change zoning, they've got a good idea of what, what it could be.
That's right.
What is likely to pass, what is likely to, to be supported by council. So really excited to see us get some of this downtown, some of these downtown parcels, you know, setting our expectations and getting them in line with, with what we've said in the past and what we've established going forward.
Yeah, really fine-tuning, is what we're doing.
How is it, and coming from a position of just not knowing, if we change the zoning, like it's proposing, how do they, some of these areas continue, or are allowed, how are they allowed to continue being a home or a business or whatever it is, if it's zoned something else?
So we're not changing the zoning on any property today. This, this is just a future designation. So if they were to come forward and say, yeah, hey, I want to do an office here, we look at the comprehensive plan, well, today it says, well, what, what our comprehensive plan says will support residential. But what, after evaluating them more closely, as we kind of looked at parcel by parcel, the support really is for that retail office neighborhood services in these areas. And so this makes that consistent to make those zoning requests, whenever they do come, easier.
So this is...
This ordinance does, just says that we're gonna, this is what we want?
This is how we tell staff what to tell the people who come forward, what we think we want to see there.
Okay.
So this is, this is basically how we direct staff.
And this is in line with, with downtown east, because it's going to be right there.
That's right. As we start to see dominoes, that, that's also why it was important to really kind of start to hone in on those parcels and make sure that designation was accurate, because we do see that big, we'll see that pressure, I think, once downtown east is out of the ground, that more of these parcels will start to turn. We want to make sure they're in alignment with council's vision, which is what this map reflects.
Yeah. I'm curious, I'm looking at, at some of these, and it looks like on the future land use map, some of the areas that are designated as suburban residential are currently zoned retail. How, explain that discrepancy? I'm looking particularly at the Walmart.
The Willbarger and Walnut.
Walnut, Willbarger, main, First Street area.
So those were, those were zoned before the comprehensive plan was adopted. And the prior comprehensive plan, the 2010 comprehensive plan, looked at downtown more as a node. And so there was more, it was much broader. And so you could, you could do a variety of zoning districts in there. This comprehensive plan was more diligent in kind of looking and articulating the different districts and kind of combination of uses we wanted to see in certain areas, but it didn't go down to the specific parcel level. This helps us to kind of clean up those parcels and make sure that our future land use plan is consistent with current zoning, and then also articulates that long-range vision to bring those uses for those parcels that aren't developed in alignment with, with our goals.
Okay, so you're telling me that the, that block there between Willbarger and Walnut off of First Street does not develop? That's, it's all zoned retail?
It is currently zoned retail. There's two homes on it, but the property is zoned retail.
Okay, so...
And so at some point in time, that property owner requested that. At that point in time, the comprehensive plan, the previous one...
Calibrated it up.
Right. But it's, it's now zoned retail.
Yes.
So if we designated a suburban residential, isn't that inconsistent?
No, we're, we're changing it from.
We're changing from.
That's, that's the before map on the left.
Yeah.
There's not an aftermath.
There's not an after. It's not an after, it's when they come.
This is a future land use map versus a zoning map. Two, two different ideas.
Not the current. Is that the future land use map we're proposing, or is that the one?
This is the current future land use map. I know it's confusing when it's got future there, but it's the current future land use map, shows it as residential.
Okay. I thought this was the one you were proposing to go forward with on the left, but that's different.
So David, the outlined, the outlined parcels on that map are the ones that would be changing?
Yeah. You can, you can see those here in blue. Those will be changing to the mixed-use neighborhood. Not, they're currently, currently designated for suburb.
Will you stop? It makes sense.
We have someone, we have someone wondering if there's some rezoning, if they would be allowed to have that mural on the side of their house for everyone to see.
Hypothetically. Hypothetically. Like, if you're on that page, you should be able to paint a mural.
Hypothetically speaking, if the property were designated to a commercial, and then we could consider murals.
Aspirational.
So that would depend on, on the actual zoning, not just the future land use map?
Correct. Right, right. Think of this more as kind of visioning, and then you got to get to zoning to get those types of allowances.
So I think that person's probably going step by step right now.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any property owners here wishing to make comment?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
And motion and second to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to approve...
Whoa, 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 whoa. Hold on, Mr. Matei here. Oh, he didn't show up. All right, motion carried. No, you may.
All right. I would like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 6A for the 2025 FLUM amendment.
So I come...
You just wanted to say FLUM.
FLUM.
It's FLUM, isn't it?
FLUM, FLUM.
I'm just kidding.
English is weird. It could be FLUM.
FLUM, anyway.
Think of the movie Flubber.
Okay, motion carried. I'm going to, go ahead.
I'm going to, go ahead and move to the, two of the pulled items since we have the consultants present and we don't want to have them here till midnight. Hopefully, we won't be here till midnight. And that's for Items 5M and 5T. Krista, you'll read the caption for 5M.
Yes, 5M is approving a conditional purchase agreement and associated conveyance documents between Virginia Weiss, Parcel 5, 5E, and 7, 7E and the city of Flugerville as necessary to acquire real property interest for the East Flugerville Parkway realignment, Jesse Bowles, East of Weiss project, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Melody.
I wanted to see, oh, I wanted to see the staff presentation.
Sure, Abby.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. Abby Morrison, I'm the Public Works Services Director. Tonight, we are here to talk about the purchase agreement for two parcels of land for a few different easements and permanent right-of-way needed for the East Flugerville Parkway project. Realignment to Jesse Bowles. The project will extend East Flugerville Parkway up to Weiss. This project, again, we talked about growing east. I think this speaks to this. As we grow, this is one of those connector roads that's going to be really good to have. But for this particular purchase agreement, like I said, there's two parcels, Parcel 5 and Parcel 7, needed right-of-way for this project. And so this project is also really important to our public works complex that's going in. And so we are really excited to kick this project off. With that, I would like to request approval of the purchase agreement for $3.9 million for the two parcels of land.
This is a big deal. Good work, very good work.
Thank you. There was no map and it was a large sum, so I just wanted to have more information.
I'm super excited about getting this aligned, getting rid of that little Jesse Bowles to Flugerville Parkway jog, definitely a safety improvement and a huge, huge improvement to access, I think someone mentioned earlier tonight. This will be our main thoroughfare from one side of the city to the other, all the way out to 973. I'll move approval of the item.
Second.
Motion and second for approval.
Yeah, this unlocks it.
Yeah, it should be.
In unanimous, motion carried. Our next item is 5T.
5T is approving a resolution, approving a resolution of the Flugerville Community Development Corporation authorizing the issuance of the corporation's sales tax revenue taxes, taxable series 2025, and other related matters.
Any specific questions or requesting presentation, Teri Toledo? Or, we don't really have a presentation, do you want to describe it? Our financial advisor, Cam.
Good evening, Dusty Trailer with RBC. We have the honor and privilege of serving the city of Flugerville as financial advisor, but also Flugerville Community Development Corporation as financial advisor. The item before you this evening is ratification of PCDC's decision to sell $18.275 million of sales tax revenue bonds. Those bonds are secured solely by PCDC's portion of the sales tax. Those bonds have an interest rate of a 5.49%. Those bonds were, they had to be taxable because of the nature of the project there. The 15-year average, 15-year final maturity on the bonds. Average annual debt service on that issuance is $1.78 million. It ended up being about $20,000 per year less than what we had originally budgeted when we set out to sell these particular bonds. I think as you all know, PCDC is going to use the proceeds of these bonds to purchase approximately 54 acres of land. The $18 million debt issuance is not the full purchase price. The remainder of that purchase price, I believe about $6 to $7 million, is being paid for by fund balance from PCDC. So the debt was not the full purchase price, limited the amount of debt that was ultimately issued there. The bonds were in the market last week, and we were before PCDC. I believe it was last Monday evening, Tuesday evening, for the sale of those bonds. And with the city council's ratification this evening, we anticipate closing on those bonds, actually on Thursday. The funding would be delivered to PCDC on Thursday. We've also got PCDC's bond attorney here, Richard Donahue.
Thank you for the information.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Trailer, if I'm not mistaken, is this the first time PCDC has issued their own bonds?
This is the first time PCDC has gone out to the public debt market to issue their own bonds. There are some, there is a loan out there with Whitney Bank for the water park that was taken out some years back, but those are the only two debt instruments out there. But this is the first time you've gone out into the public debt markets to issue bonds through PCDC. And in fact, this is the first time we got a bond rating for PCDC. PCDC was rated AA- by S&amp;P, very strong rating. Very strong rating for a sales tax back bond. So all very good. And in conjunction with that rating, I think you guys know this, S&amp;P also upgraded the city's geo-rating to AA+. All very good, all very good news.
That was it. I didn't get some of the staff answers until 4:15, and I wasn't available to read all of it. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood. It was a large amount.
How does that rate compare historically?
The five, well, it's a very, it's a different rate, right? Like, if we were in the market today for city of Flugerville bonds that were tax-exempt, we would be looking at a rate probably below 4%. But because this is taxable at the 5.5% rate, that's the reason for the differential.
And it has to be a taxable bond because it's a sales tax bond?
Because of, no, because of the nature of the project that's being financed.
And realistically speaking, you know, we had that conversation years ago about how we have just gotten used to, I guess for 15 years or so, 1%, 2%, 9%. And that wasn't the reality. The reality was that, hey, listen, back in the day, 7% was considered good. So we're getting back to the norm. And that should be the norm moving forward unless the Fed pulls some interesting.
We really are, and right now, still a low entry, on the low side of normal is where we are right now.
Yes, absolutely.
Even back in 2006, 2007, it was 5.2.
Exactly, that's exactly what happened.
We need to get used to this. Motion approved, 5T as presented.
A motion and a second. And motion carried, thank you very much. Moving on to the regular agenda. Have Item 7A, discuss and consider action to approve a construction contract with Joe Blain Construction in the amount of $8,250,009 for construction services associated with Historic Colored Edition subdivision, Russell Street, Caldwell Lane, Taylor Street, Lincoln Avenue, and Grant Avenue infrastructure improvements project, and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this project in the Historic Colored Edition subdivision is a big impact to our city, but also a huge impact to our community as a whole. This project just doesn't address street reconstruction, also addresses water, wastewater. It adds street lighting, also addresses power, and then also adds an additional street, which is Grant Street up there. The project is about a nine-month duration. We plan to issue the notice to proceed to the contractor about February so we can get moving on this. And as you know, this has been a long time coming, so we're really excited to finally be here and recommend a word of contract. And I do have to make a clarification on the motion. During the bid phase of this project, we did have to make an addendum, which added some material costs for construction. So it's very minor, it's about $20,000 additional for each bid that we received. It's very minor. So I just wanted to provide that clarification that the recommendation is actually $8,269,204. $8,269,204. And so I just want to make that clarification. It's only about $20,000 bucks, but I just want to make sure that's noted. Sure, $8,269,204. I can answer any questions. Our consultant is also here, half associates, as well as our project manager, Cindy Rose.
I've seen this very, you've never looked at this area for CDBG funding? Is this an area that would not be eligible for CDBG funding?
It's not. We looked at it.
It's not, the population does not meet minimums.
It's too lightly populated.
Well, well, yeah. Let's, yeah. I get where, I guess.
The population does not merit it. I just want to say, no, I'm really excited to see this finally come to fruition. I know we've been working on this for several years and finally getting to a point where we're showing some respect to this part of town. I was incredibly surprised to learn about this area in town and what it was called in the past. And we had quite a bit of debate in the community to say, you know, how do we preserve and respect our heritage? And I think this is an incredible opportunity for us to invest in a historically underserved area and demonstrate that respect to the folks who lived in and supported and helped found this town.
I'd either take this a step further. I remember being a commissioner in the ESD when the map was brought up to me regarding the Specific Colored Edition, and then going to the council and having the conversation specifically with all of you regarding what that looks like and going from there, and people weren't cognizant or aware of it. And yet, the people that were there, the church that were there, they knew all too well about what happened in this specific area, that this specific area was not treated like the rest of the city, that it was dilapidated in a lot of different ways and a lot of disrespect was given to the people when they spoke up there. And that wasn't just for a year or two years, but generations. And to be able to go ahead and have, as somebody said at our last meeting, that when you enter Flugerville, you can tell you enter Flugerville by the streets that are there, by the landscape that they're, it's a demonstrative difference from other areas that you come from, from there. That's huge, because this area wasn't that way. This area wasn't treated that way. And, you know, the people who, and many of them back there, who have literally for generations been the folks taking care of it, are looking out, you know, the steward, speaking about the issues and concerns of that community, it's tremendous to see about that. So not only do I give credit to this council, I give credit to the past councils because when they, when this became an issue and they were aware of it, they did something about it. And frankly, there's a lot of communities that wouldn't have done that. So yes, $20,000 extra dollars, sure. But what we're seeing right here, even having our own zoning for this area, you get it, you worked with the community to make this vision happen. That's just something about the staff that we have here.
I just had a couple of questions about the project. So is this reconstruction of the other streets that are listed? Or is it just one new street?
No, it's all the streets listed.
Okay, well, because I didn't see that in this list. And then, does it include sidewalks?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Grant Street, are we still looking to eventually connect it with Swinson Farms?
That I'm not, that I'm not sure of.
We looked at that a while back, okay, so.
Recall, I recall maybe having a crash gate there because that is a multifamily back behind there. Oh, you mean all the way to Swinson Farms? Actually, I thought it was Lincoln that was going to go all the way through. Lincoln's going to connect. And I know we've had that conversation with adjacent property owners.
So that's still possible in the future?
As long as the school district, the previous superintendent had made, I know, I know, that's probably the better way for me to put it. Previous superintendent said, absolutely, we will go ahead and work for that area. We'll see what happens with that.
So when you say new streets, there's not a street called Grant Street right there?
No, there's Grant Avenue. Yeah, the Grant that runs, well, from our perspective, east to west, which is probably which is north, but up at the top of the screen, Grant would be new.
So what's there now?
I think it's stubbed out, so Caldwell Lane ends, if I'm not mistaken.
It's, as I understand, it's dedicated public right-of-way, but it's just never been constructed. Grant Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry, the length of the contract, the timeline?
Approximately nine months.
Nine months?
It'll be done this year.
Cool. All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Is that going to be Grant Street or Grant Avenue?
I believe it's Grant Street, I'll double check to make sure.
Okay, because it's listed in the agenda item as Grant Avenue.
Motion to approve.
And a motion and second to approve. 7A.
Who'd you get?
It turned off colors, there was like no colors, and I pressed it.
Sometimes you got to go back and forth.
Yes. It just went gray, it went gray.
I was looking at you.
So 7B is discuss and consider action to approve a resolution amending the city's legislative agenda for the 89th legislative session. And Council, I believe you have before you on your desk the. I have to get my glasses on.
The legislative agenda.
The legislative agenda, is it marked up?
Correct, you'll see the redline version and then the clean version behind it, based upon the conversation that we had two weeks ago, to our best of our ability. That's what we believe that you asked for. It's to remove items.
Before we dive into this agenda topic, I just wanted to take a moment to provide some context so that our citizens can fully understand how we got here. The legislative subcommittee was established to achieve objectives outlined in the resolutions approved by council across three years, 2022, 2023, and 2024. This consistency reflects strong support for these goals. In November 2024, the council unanimously approved the subcommittee members with three positions available and three volunteers stepping forward. As a subcommittee member, I follow the council's directives diligently. Oversight and support are, I'm sorry, any suggestion of ulterior motives misrepresents my intentions and commitment to transparency. Oversight and support are not mutually exclusive. I support the men and women that keep our community safe. Asking questions about finances doesn't mean I oppose the police or emergency responders. It means I'm committed to accountability and effective governance. Advocating for local control and accountability isn't about being against anyone. It's about fostering inclusion, collaboration, and positive outcomes for our community. The current legislative priorities would foster greater inclusion, enhance collaboration, and lay the groundwork for a more constructive and productive long-term relationship. I've seen firsthand the benefit of tough but productive conversations. Let's focus on facts and work together professionally to serve our citizens. So thank you.
Anybody else wish to make comments or questions? Well, I would have to say that I oppose these amendments. I think at the very least, the city should seek introduction and passage of legislation that will protect its territorial integrity and the ability of the city council to say no to annexation attempt by other government bodies. That said, I think it also is appropriate for the city to advocate for democratically elected leadership in our taxing authorities. Of course, as we all know, mud boards are elected, HOAs are elected, ISDs are elected. And there's only a very small subset of officials in the state of Texas that can set tax rates and not have to answer to the voters about that. It strikes me as inappropriate, and this council has on numerous occasions agreed with that position. But at the very least, it seems to me that the council should support legislation that will protect the territorial integrity of the city. So adding my two cents is I respect your position, Councilperson Ryan and Councilman Rogers. I think if we understand where the emergency service district came from, from a group of volunteers that pulled together back in the early days and answered the call to fires mostly back then because we didn't have a lot of traffic. But the emergence of the E S D two or the district as it is today was probably out of necessity because the city of Flugerville didn't have funding for a fire department in, in the early days. And so in conjunction with, uh, an effort to provide the appropriate fire protection as well as subsequently, um, ambulance service as well, working with Travis County and having gone through that transition of them supporting the city or supporting E S D for a while and then, of course, when they moved out on their own, then they became their own entity. I think it's important that we've had a discussion or at least comments about how the city of Flugerville could have its own fire department at some point in the future. And I suppose that is possible in the future. I think over the experiences that we've had more recently with E S D in terms of taxation, representation, and those issues that have been brought forward, is that it is an organization that is working in its present state. While we, some may not like the way or approve or whatever the word may be, the way the board is made up and the way the board is appointed, there is accountability there to address that with the Travis County Commissioners Court. And they are the elected officials that appoint that board. And they have appointed some very credible, reliable, uh, members that serve with integrity and honesty and again, for the purposes of serving and providing protection and public safety to the city of Flugerville. I think we as a council and as a city moving forward, we have said, let's work together. Well, some of us have said, let's work together. And I think that's very feasible. I think we can work with the E S D. I think we have not made that effort. It seems like over the last few years, it's always been opposition for the, the reasons that both council members pointed out. And in a democracy, obviously, there are going to be people that are going to be served without their representation because the other side won't. So whether, you know, it's my representative or not, it's still a democracy and I have to respect that. And I think that we need to respect the, uh, the organization as it is right now. And yes, definitely, I think we need to work with them and, uh, become more collaborative with them instead of more confrontational. And I think moving forward that at the end of the day, whether it's five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 or 20 years from now, Mr. Rogers and Ms. Ryan, I think we will get to that point where the city of Flugerville will have its own fire department and we won't have to be concerned with the election of board members and the presumably transparency issue that seems to be a topic of discussion at all times. So I would seven, definitely be in favor of the amendments as presented.
I think, Mayor, I think you said it well. I think the irony part of this conversation is that the founding members of that volunteer fire department were founding families of this community, council members who were actually involved, you know, who actually volunteered for that, for that department. You know, Councilmember Ryan, I love the way you put it about disagree, work with respect. I mean, there are people that I know very, very well smile in front of my face and do others who truly try to undermine things that I want to do and get accomplished and work from there. But you don't see, you know, you, 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 one, you'd never let them see you sweat. And then two, how you treat those people and how you act, you, you act with those people the same way you would hope they would act with you. Is it disappointing at times? Absolutely. Because there's people that you think you rely on, hear about and work from there. I, I, I get that. But we set the standard for how people act and go from there. And I, I understand the frustration. Trust me, I, I understand the frustration and how things can go. But I think that in this instance, when we're talking about what's happening here, we have to look at what's, you know, what is the vision, ultimate vision for the city right now? And I, and I feel at least at this moment in time, it is to work with them. It is to go and establish relationships. It's tried to go and reform some of the things that have happened through the years. Strangely enough, we were at that point not too long ago. Then I feel like it's just gone off the rails the last five years, something like that as well. But I feel like you, you again have people who are going on above themselves to say, hey, listen, let's work together and make a demonstrative difference on these things. And so I agree. I think this is, is it, Mayor, would you entertain a motion?
I, I'm. I'd like to, to speak to, to some of these comments because I, I think there's some additional context that I think is important. Unlike the mayor, I, I didn't grow up in Flugerville. I've only been here for 20 years, but I have had the, the opportunity to speak on a number of occasions to people who were, who were part of the volunteer fire department, including former chiefs of the volunteer fire department. They talked about some of the fundraisers they did and the volunteer subscriptions that people had to pay for the, the vol, the, the fire service and about how it was such a relief for them when they, they finally got the three cent tax that they were able to, to fund things. And I've also spoken to, again, I haven't served as long on the council as, as Mayor Gonzalez, but I have spoken to former mayors and former city councilmen and, um, to a man and woman, uh, they, they say that either their biggest regret or one of their biggest regrets from their time serving on the council is that they kicked the can down the road on this. And they look at it in, in the past and they say, man, it would have been so much cheaper if we had fixed this problem in 1998 or 2000 or 2006 or 2012. Well, this expense, this, this problem is just going to get more expensive. Uh, and if we kick it down the road, it will get, the, the bill will just be higher. That said, um, uh, at, at the very least, uh, I think the, the city should have the protection from being involuntarily annexed. Now, there was an attempt by E S D 17 in conjunction with these other people to involuntarily annex the city of Flugerville in 2021. That attempt was rejected by the voters of Flugerville, 64% to 36%. Made it very clear that the citizens of Flugerville didn't want to be involuntarily annexed, but that required a lot of time, effort, and money by the citizens of Flugerville to, uh, to have that fight, which was completely unnecessary because the people on the council understood that it was inappropriate because one of the things that we do is we spend a lot of time and effort digging into these issues and understanding that it was not appropriate for the city of Flugerville to be annexed. We looked at the, at the numbers and we saw that the representations that were made by the E S D about their finances were not in fact realistic. Nonetheless, they pushed forward with those unrealistic representations and it was necessary incumbent on those of us who opposed that, uh, which, uh, let's see, I believe that was a unanimous resolution, um, to educate the members of the public about that. I, I think at the very least, we should be protecting our citizens from that kind of interference, uh, that is externally opposed. And again, while it is true that the Travis County Commissioners do appoint these people, including the president who lives in Kansas City, not Flugerville, lives in Kansas City, 800 miles away, but he's their, their chief, you know, their, uh, head of their, their board. We wouldn't allow a mayor of Flugerville who lived in Kansas City, uh, and it seems wholly inappropriate that the E S D board president is in Kansas City. Now, we can't, we can't do anything about that as long as he's not an elected official because he gets appointed by the Travis County Commissioners who by law have to live in Travis County. They can't live in Kansas City. They can't even live in Round Rock. I think that, uh, we should, uh, we should stick with the decisions we made earlier. And, and, and to Councilman Mataris' point, it is true that the, uh, the relationship went off the rails in 2020. Well, Humpty Dumpty didn't fall. Humpty Dumpty was pushed. As you may recall, in January of 2021, uh, the people across the street put up signs all over town declaring, uh, that the city of Flugerville was going to, was going to lose ambulance service. And the scare tactic was, you know, we're just going to let people die in the streets. We're going to, you're not going to get any EMS response unless you raise taxes. Kind of exaggerating there a little bit. No, that's, that's pretty much exactly what the story was. I, I don't want to get into a.
Call the question.
I have called, the question's called.
What does that mean?
Means we got a move approval.
So there's no.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
We were motion, the motion was to.
To approve the.
The changes.
To approve the resolution with the.
Oh, we were sandbagging you.
Yeah, I know. Ms. Ryan.
Technical difficulties.
Time frame.
Okay. Okay.
Wait.
Motion carried. Okay. Seven C.
It passed.
All right. Moving on, seven C, discuss and consider action on existing and proposed legislation advocacy agreements.
So we can talk through those or, or y'all want to? I didn't know.
I think, I think it would be good to talk through, like, just have a quick.
Some options. Okay. Brianna, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Rep. Tim and Council. Tonight on the agenda for your consideration are three proposals from different firms regarding legislative advocacy. These are specific to the Qualified Hotel Project piece of legislation as well as the Tax Dot toll legislation. So the scopes that you'll see before you in these agreements are limited to those two items from our legislative agenda. The first comes from focused advocacy is an amendment to their current agreement that we have with them. The amount to approve would be not to exceed $202,100. What you'll see is that the retainer is $200,000, but included within the agreement is $350 monthly reimbursement. So the not to exceed amount would be $202,100.
And then real quick, is that a, in addition to the existing focused advocacy or is that a, a change to the existing agreement we have with them?
This is a change to the existing agreement we have with them.
How much is the original, uh, contract amount versus the, the new contract amount?
The original amount that council approved was $78,150.
Okay, so this is an additional $120,000. All right, thank you.
The second agreement that you'll see before you is in, um, is from Searl Strategies with that limited scope to the Tax Dot and Toll, or sorry, Tax Dot, uh, toll item as well as a qualified, uh, hotel projects. It's for the duration of January 28th through June 2nd. And the total amount is eight, $80,500. The 500 is a one-time reimbursement for travel costs. It's not a monthly cost, but it brings that total amount to $80,500. The third agreement is with Hillco Strategy, or Hillco Partners, my apologies. Um, the term would be January 28th through January, or through June 30th. Again, that limited scope, Tax Dot and Qualified Hotel Projects with the total amount being $150,000. You'll see at the, um, within the agreements for Hillco and Searl, the very last page is the exhibit. You have all three agreements printed before you. The exhibit showed that breakdown of the fee schedule for both Searl and Hillco.
So the, uh, the agreements with Searl and Hillco are for an identical scope?
The difference between the scopes with focused advocacy, you'll see within there, there's still language for what they'll call general defense. So if there's something on the legislative agenda, kind of what T M L does, keeping track of what's being filed, um, if there are things that we disagree with, just kind of letting us know about those items, like you've seen in their past. With Searl and Hillco, those, they're limited to just Tax Dot and Toll, Tax Dot and Qualified Hotel Projects.
So the, what, are there any other specific services provided by focused advocacy or is it just the general defense?
General defense and then the Qualified Hotel Projects and Tax Dot.
I'm sorry, in the existing focused advocacy?
Oh, so.
Just the general.
In the existing focused advocacy agreement, it, per focused advocacy is limited to the emergency services district legislation along with general defense, um, within their agreement.
Have we done a qualitative evaluation of Hillco and Searl?
So Hillco was reached out to last session. They were successful in getting Bo, the city of Beaumont incorporated within the Qualified Hotel Project legislation. So they were reached out for, for that reason. And then Searl, as they had been brought forward with the E S D, um, legislation in the past council meeting, we brought them forward with this proposal.
So Hillco literally is one of the preeminent, if not the most preeminent lobby firm in the state of Texas in one respect across the country. I mean, they're, they're phenomenal and I, I give a lot of credit to staff. I, I mean, this was completely independent of me. That's why I was fascinated that you would reach out to them because I mean, I have a lot of dear friends over there. They're good. They're very, very good. And you saw the price tag that they have for their specific services is not dissimilar from anything that you've seen with focused advocacy because that's what the market bears specifically for what they're doing here with that. Focused advocacy, as you brought up, you know, well, we have an existing contract. Does this replace an existing contract? What exactly services do they have with that? They would have a, a, a different, they gave, I love the way you put it, that the way they interpret the contract, you know, is saying that this is, it was for these specific services and this is a replacement for that.
So if we do not approve the focused advocacy, do we lose, does that, uh, cancel the original contract?
I believe our, our original agreement would still be in place with focused advocacy.
Our recommendation would be in the motion if you're going to go with Hillco, for example, that you would cancel with focused advocacy and we would term that contract.
But, but we would not be getting general defense from Hillco.
No.
In this agreement.
No.
Could we request an expansion of scope if we were to go with a different firm to include the general advocacy?
I mean, to that, to that point, I don't know that we're receiving a tremendous amount of value in the general defense. of value in the general defense.
That's what I was, that's what, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not dismissing it, I'm not...
From our existing...
Yeah. So, but we envision a certain level of service for general advocacy, which we could request quotes from other, from, if we were to want to go with another firm, we could amend our quote request to include the services that we intended with our original contract.
My thought, my thought process is that you get a lot of what we're talking about from our Friday, is it Friday, is our Friday emails from T M L?
Yeah, I was gonna say T M L.
T M L and our internal staff are gonna be doing a, a pretty good job of that.
Yep. And, and I, I mean, I, I think, I mean, my opinion is that Searl Group, again, good, good up and coming group, I mean, they've got, they've got great reputations. I think this really boils down to, Hillco would be, would be a more mature them. Maybe that's a better way for me to put it from that side.
So that would be my, my question, does Searl have any experience in successfully advocating items such as those that we have in front of us?
A representative from Searl Strategies is here tonight, Brian Thornton, if you'd like to ask that question.
I would love to ask that question. So generally, tell me about your success.
Yeah. Mayor, Council, thank you for, for consideration this evening. I'm Brian Thornton, chief lobbyist for Searl Strategies. So to Council Mataris' point, we are a younger firm. We, you know, me personally, as our chief lobbyist, my most recent session in the Texas Legislature was 2021. So, you know, in that limited time, we have done, we've done work inside the building on and at city, city council level on, on these, these types of issues. As a lobby firm, we have yet to work on a, on either of these issues specifically. You know, however, we feel it's well within our capacity and ability to do effectively. You know, there's a little bit of a double-edged sword with some of the more established firms. You know, I think y'all may have experienced some of that, when, when you've got a list of 30 cities and, and you can point to all these previous victories. You know, as a client, the city may be one of 30 other cities that, 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 that firm represents. What you get with us, you get, you get someone here tonight. You get current relationships with current leadership. My first boss in the legislature was Dustin Burrows, who's now the Speaker of the Texas House. So, you know, can we point to a win as a lobby firm on these specific issues? Not yet. But I would submit to you that we're as well positioned as any lobby firm that's been around for a lot longer.
Are there any other issues, any other legislation that you've helped carry in your tenure? You said 2021, you weren't, you weren't in the session in 23?
Right. 23 was my first session as lobbyist.
As a lobbyist.
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said 21.
No, so he was saying that he was in the legislature, working in the legislature in 21, his last...
Oh, you were employed, okay.
Yes, I, at that time...
So in 2023, did you carry any legislation successfully through?
It depends on your definition of success, but we got a bill out of the House, out of the Senate with amendment that strengthened the bill. A lot of times amendments water bills down. And we got popped on a procedural point of order when it went back to the House for a vote to concur. So, I mean, we got to the 99-yard line, which is, for a bill of first impression, we caught a lot of people by surprise. And it was a bill worth billions of dollars with a B. So there was a lot at stake, and we had a lot of firepower against us, if I'm not mistaken, including some of our competition.
Do you mean the 99-yard line or the one-yard line? As a Texas Longhorn fan, I'm all familiar with the one-yard line.
Yes, one-yard line. That's correct, yes.
Yeah, I shot it myself. Yes, I did.
Any other questions?
No, I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have representatives from the other firms?
Unfortunately, Hillco Partners had a prior obligation, and Focused Advocacy could not join.
And, and to be frank, I mean, my suggestion was to not have someone here. Let's put it this way, I've received several calls after our last meeting, and from people in industry who have nothing to do with our city. And they were shocked. But, I mean, let's put it this way, I, I feel like if we're gonna invite people in and have conversations, you know, you know, let's make sure that our decorum and how we act is appropriate and that. That was, that was definitely something shared very quickly on a Wednesday morning before 6 o'clock in the morning to me by several people. I said, "That's not normally how we act." And, you know, and so let's us have this conversation. I mean, I, I feel very comfortable in saying to you that Hillco, I mean, Hillco would, would do well by us, and they can do the job. I also feel very comfortable saying to you that I believe Focused Advocacy can. I think that one thing that I was hesitant about was Focused Advocacy and how they related and worked with staff. I was, it was good to hear that they had a conversation with one of our senior staff members to talk about what the issues are and working from there, because I get tired of having those conversations. I get tired of hearing those conversations about what's occurring from there as well. And I do think that they can get the job done. We're, it's already February, and my concern is that you saw what we were talking about, what we're trying to get done here. We're going to need someone who's well-established, well-respected, to, to shepherd this home and get this organized, because I, I like the way that David put it. We want this to be the anchor of that property, you know, what we're doing from there as well. What we're doing with Text Dot, that's a game changer, not just for the city of Flugerville, that's for the state of Texas. And, you know, and Focused Advocacy, if I recall clearly, did Brandon already make a call and talk to somebody at, at Text Dot regarding, you know, someone in appropriation specifically about this right here, because they've got the relationships for that. And that's what this really boils down to. I mean, that's why I wanted you to say this, but you didn't say it about, you know, you mentioned Speaker Burrows, the relationships matter, and having those relationships matter, no matter how, I mean, if you're new or old right there, be able to make that phone call. And what we're, you see the price tag, at first it's kind of shocking, but it's value-based. You know, it's a demonstrable difference, you know, when we have, you know, some other random person make a phone call down to, let's say, we're talking about our county, our county commissioners, right, our county commissioner's office, than Councilmember Caesar Ruiz calling and saying, "Hey, listen, this is something that we're having core and make a demonstrable difference." Both firms are well-respected, well-liked, and they can help take this out.
Yeah, but I think we need to also remember and refocus back on the problems we've had with Focused Advocacy.
Oh, yeah.
The fact that, you know, they should be representing us, and maybe, maybe they're now communicating with staff, that has not been the norm. Usually, our staff is doing all the work for them, and if we're paying them the money we pay them, and they tell us, we reach out to them, and they say, "We'll reach out to your legislatures." That's what I pay you for. I don't pay you to tell me to reach out to my legislatures. And we're already doing that. We all do that here on, at this dais. So that burns me quite a bit when, when it just seems like we're being swept under the rug, maybe they're concentrating on other cities, you know, as you said earlier. Yeah, that, that, that I don't forget, and it seems to be the norm lately with them, and it's caused me some, some frustrations.
And we specifically told them, I think it was Councilmember Rogers, you said, "You're gonna have to win over Councilmember Ruiz."
I mean, this is a, I think it's an ongoing problem we've had. I mean, we talked about it last year at our retreat, you know. A guy came up here and he gave, gave us a presentation like as if he was just reading it for the first time. Well, it was because he read it for the first time. It's because our staff had to do all the work for him. You know, that's, that's not right. I mean, if you're, if you're too lazy to put something together and, and present it for us, then I don't want you.
So, as, as I sit here and I try to debate between Hillco and Searl, it's $50,000 difference, and that's, that's a pretty big amount of money.
I think it's $70,000.
Seventy? It was, I thought it was 80 to 130.
80 to 150.
Seventy, 80 to 150.
Eighty to 150, okay. Goodness, $70,000 difference. I, I don't have the basis to make that qualitative difference. I'm, I'm asking the rest of my, my council here.
Well, I think, I think being a lobbyist and presenting yourself before legislators, and I hate to put it this simple, it's like going to Vegas. It is.
It is true. You're gonna get the representatives.
So are you willing to risk losing $75,000 more or not? Are you a gambling person?
Let me say, I, I think all of these are, are, are very capable folks, and I, I obviously have a, a different experience with Focused Advocacy than, than Councilmember Ruiz does. And I have, I have tremendous respect for everybody on, on all of these. One of the things that, that Councilman Mataris has been talking about for, I think, five months, maybe longer, is the, the instability in the Texas House this time around, and how the, the tough part of getting any legislation passed this time around is getting it through the Texas House. I like the idea of bringing on board somebody who worked for the speaker. Regardless of the, the difference in the compensation, I feel like if we have somebody who has the speaker's ear, that dramatically increases our likelihood of success.
So, Serena, what is the, the legislation is approved, we win, what do we stand to gain?
It, it depends on the project size. So if we're seeking, so it depends on the project side. It could be millions of dollars.
So the, and in particular, that's on the hotel occupancy tax.
Correct, I'm sorry.
On the, on the Text Dot thing, we're looking to save, what, $29 million?
Are you sure it's not 35?
Thirty, thirty...
I think it's 35.
Over 30.
Yeah, yeah.
Over 30 million.
Because, you know, you know.
Because it's hostage dollars.
Why, why are you saying, were you just trying to antagonize me?
Over 30.
Never lowers their price.
I guess we didn't lock in that price.
Did not.
Mr. Weiss, I think that might help. I mean, you know, my position is, and I've said this before, and it doesn't make sense, is you gotta lose money to make money. So, you know.
I, unfortunately, I don't have, I don't have the basis to make a qualitative decision between the two lobbyists. I do like the idea of having someone who's worked for the speaker. I like the idea of having someone who has, you know, a, a track record of success. Who else knows these firms? Or has staff done any sort of qualitative analysis?
I met with Hillco Partners and spoke with them. They have roughly 20 years of experience within the lobbying industry. The firm's been around for quite some time, and they have a vast amount of staff onboard. And then Searl Strategies, we've also met with, Michael, the CEO, has previously worked for the city of Austin on the Qualified Hotel Projects when they were getting passed as well.
Mr. Mayor, will you entertain a motion?
Sure.
I, I move that we, we hire Searl Associates to handle this for us.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. I make a motion that we engage Hillco as our lobbyist. Second.
May I just ask, does that mean also cancel the other contract? Because I would need both, just to...
Oh, okay.
We, we take that as a, as a second issue?
If you want to, that's...
Okay. Have a motion second, for engaging Hillco. Motion carry.
I move we...
Hold on just a minute, please. So this happened on my last vote, Trista.
I was curious about that.
I come up as a negative vote, because I voted yes on the, the legislation amendment, so...
If we can then revert to voice vote, if that's happening, so we can confirm.
I just didn't know what was going on.
I figured if we had four votes that carried, it didn't matter, but it happened again.
Technical issue.
And he's pressing.
All right, so, I'm sorry, we'll take a voice vote on Hillco. Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Ruiz?
Yes.
Ms. Holiday?
Yes.
Mayor votes yes. Mr. Mataris?
Yes.
Yes.
Y'all spoke at the same time.
Ms. Ryan?
No.
And Mr. Rogers?
No.
Okay. Motion carry.
I would like to move that we sever our agreement with Focused Advocacy.
Second. Any discussion?
Does it make sense to engage two firms?
You know...
Because we voted for Hillco, so...
What are your concerns, Rudy?
Reputation, to be blunt. You know, I mean, it, it's a small pool, and, you know, I, I'd rather us, I mean, us jumping from one to another. I mean, I saw where the train's going on this. It's like, okay, this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna, that's fine. I do think that, you know, they've, they've done good work, what we've asked for them to do about there. I completely acknowledge what's happened regarding, you know, in the past. I completely understand that and respect that. At the same time, you know, they've shown on numerous occasions that, hey, work and advocate and work for us and, and get things done and organized. I mean, I think, for me at least personally, it's out of respect. You know, it's kind of like, man, like, I mean, they, it's a, it's a good firm, they're good people, and I, you know, it's a small pool, and I, for me, worried about Flugerville at times about what reputation we'll get with people from that, because it was, those phone calls were not nice about, hey, what's going on over here?
Well, sometimes I think, you know, it's, I'll use lingo in your, your, your industry. I mean, they're good lawyers, sometimes you need a better lawyer. You know, that one lawyer may take you as far as they can take you, and then you need to, to move up.
But are they even lawyers?
Yeah, no.
I mean, maybe that might be the case.
I mean, I'd say, you, you make a good point, Rudy, but I think it works against you. The, you know, it's a, it's about respect and it's about reputation, and, and frankly, this amendment they sent us is, is insulting. It's disrespectful. We've asked them to carry legislation for us, we've been engaged with them for many years, and, and the moment we ask them to carry some legislation, they say, "Oh, no, that's, that's not what you're paying us for." It sure seems like it is. So I, I found it to be, you know, when it, when it comes to respect in the industry, I'm, I'm not gonna be held hostage because it's a small pool. I'm gonna go find someone who's, who's willing to do the work that I'm willing to pay them for.
So I would say this, this is probably a better way, and, you know, and I'll share it, just like you said, you weren't quite sure, like, who talks about quality values these people. That contract and, and what they said with specifically price tag is not an insulting price tag. That's literally the cost of doing business for the specific legislation. They went ahead and asked the city of Fort Worth, asked the city of Garland, asked, asked various cities about what they worked for to get these things done regarding our hotel air, I mean, not hotel, the convention center, hotel occupancy and working for these things. It's not, I mean, I, I get it from someone from the outside, may look at this and say, "What are you doing? Like, you had this contract right here, and now you're saying from there..." Well, it's a different service, and it, it is, and it, and substantially different service, particularly when you talk about, you asked about ROI. The ROI is substantial, and that's why what they're charging is, it's the value cost for what they're doing for that. And, and, and I'm not casting aspersions to what you're saying, I, I'm interested, you know, you're not familiar with the industry, I get that. What I'm trying to say is that that wasn't meant to be an insult, it was just the cost of doing business. But I also understand exactly what Caesar has said, and I get it, I can't, you know, I can't discredit that, I understand that.
I think for the past, at least two, if not three sessions, I've... I think for the past at least two, if not three sessions, I've asked for proactive legislation, and this is the agreement we've gotten in the past. It seemed out of sorts.
So my concern was that, in my reading of the existing contract, I thought we did have coverage for the entire legislative agenda because it says in the contract, "Work to pass legislation the city deems positive to the public health, safety, or welfare of its citizens, including legislation related to emergency services district, and as outlined in the city's legislative agenda." And their agreement was signed a month before the legislative agenda was approved. And I would have assumed that they would have been collaborating with the city to put together the agenda so that everyone was on the same page. And so I don't know if that happened or not, but, you know, the convention center and TaxDOT was included on the legislative agenda that was approved. And so I thought it would have been covered in our existing contract and not having to pay an additional fee.
And member staff talked about how the hotel, the thing came on afterwards with that, but the TaxDOT was...
It goes back, I think, to the communication issue that was happening where staff was trying to get clarity, and there was a lack of communication. And so we're three months later in this situation instead of dealing with it in October when it first passed.
Yeah, we are literally in the middle of session.
Okay, any other comment, question? I have a motion on the table, too. Would you repeat the motion?
To sever the agreement with focused advocacy.
And, Kim?
I was just asking for clarification of how much more they were asking for on top of what we're already paying, but I think I got that answered.
You seconded, right?
No, you did.
You did.
Oh, yeah, I did, okay.
I hope so.
Man, yeah, I did.
You did, alright.
And I'm gonna do a roll call.
Official scorekeeper, I should say.
If this doesn't work, then we'll have to do it again anyway.
Can I get some clarification? If we do not cancel the current contract, what is our expenditure that we are currently contracted for?
We'll have a remainder of around seventy-eight thousand. Oh, total, or?
How much will we pay?
Between now and the end of the session.
The total amount of the contract is seventy-eight thousand dollars.
So how much is it that we have not already paid?
And that's an annual, I'm sorry, that's an annual contract?
No, we remember, we remember we cut it, we cut it to end at session.
So, did you have the numbers by the month, or no?
It was eight...
There are two different questions.
About eight thousand dollars a month?
Correct. So at a thirty-day severance, it'll be around that. If you maintain them through Ju... When's the ending of theirs?
June thirtieth.
End of June, it'll be...
So it's a delta of twenty-four thousand dollars?
Well, I think we're saving four months, if I'm, oh, thirty-two.
Probably thirty to forty.
Yeah, four.
Thirty to forty.
Yeah.
Okay, got your question answered. All right, Mr. Rogers?
No.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Matar?
No.
Mayor votes yes. Ms. Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Ruiz?
Yes.
And Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Motion pass. All right.
Sure. You're good. You're good.
Okay, um, duh, 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 duh.
Seven.
Seven D discussing consideration regarding continuation of tax reimbursement zone number one and possible alternatives.
David Rogers brought this one.
Mr. Rogers.
I'm sorry, where are we?
Seven D.
Seven D, tax, the TERS number one and possible alternatives.
Is requested by Councilman Rogers?
Yes.
What are we, talking about?
Seven D?
We don't know.
D.
Seven D, I'm sorry, I was looking at seven B, I'm just hearing. Yeah, I, um... We put this TERS in place two thousand and fourteen, is that right, Mr. Mayor?
Which TERS, the TERS policy?
Number one.
Oh.
Two thousand and ten.
It had to be earlier than that.
It was before that.
Because that'd be, that'd be thousand and one, yeah.
Ten to twelve.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not the policy.
It's not, it's not clear to me that it was appropriate then, but we, the legislative purpose behind the TERS is to help to develop blighted areas. We don't really have blighted areas in Flugerville. And it's not clear to me that there is a, there's an overwhelming public need to have a TERS or to continue a TERS. Now, I think there are some, there may be some outstanding obligations of the TERS. But I think perhaps we should look at discontinuing the TERS and to the extent that we want to offer incentives on individual projects, replacing the TERS with three-eighty agreements on an ad hoc basis. It's not clear to me that the TERS is really serving a development purpose. As I recall, the original idea behind the TERS is, well, we're gonna get that Pecan Street project going.
That wasn't original, that was...
It was certainly early in the TERS, and, no.
No, no. You have a constant, like, twenty seventeen or eighteen, right?
Pecan existed in twenty-ten, but they asked for a three-eighty agreement, not a TERS.
But we're saying, we're talking about the TERS, and we're talking about how we brought it over, so that wasn't until twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen.
I technically live in the TERS. It's Falcon Point, it's the hospital.
He's throwing shade at you. Okay, so I'm trying to better understand what's going on.
Is there a benefit that the city is getting from this that is above and beyond what an ad hoc three-eighty agreement on individual projects would be?
Serena? Well, I want to first, the TERS doesn't preclude the use of three-eighty agreements. There's just various tools.
Yeah, but, you know, we have limited time and energy, so is it, are we getting a benefit from the TERS? Yes or no?
The answer is yes, right?
Because, or it would be zero. I mean, the purpose of that increment is to go up from zero.
That's the purpose of it, but are we actually achieving the purpose?
So I would say it's going to support downtown east, so I'm gonna say yes.
Because we pulled it over, remember?
The purpose of the TERS for downtown east is to support a public endeavor by which we believe we'll also end up in private investments. So I will argue that, yes, you needed the TERS as a tool to make downtown east viable.
An incentive.
As an incentive.
And that's something that you cannot accomplish with a three-eighty?
You would, we're the developer, so that's why. You could have used another tool with another developer, such as a three-eighty.
But since we're the developer, we couldn't use a three-eighty ourselves.
So we could allocate tax dollars to...
The TERS just to the downtown east property, and we'd lose nothing.
And we lose the base.
Okay, so is your, are you trying to say that, because, okay, yeah, I'm trying to better wrap my head around this, and it's been a long day. So, you mentioned the Pecan District and the TERS. Are you saying that we're not, since we're not, since the Pecan District hasn't developed the way that we'd like, we should build a pullback to TERS from Pecan District, or what's your focus here?
I'm just, I'm just trying to see the benefit. We have a, we have a, we have a layer of government, we have a TERS board. We have, you know, city staff that spends resources supporting the TERS board. We have people make applications for TERS payments, which we routinely reject. It seems like an exercise in wheel spinning.
Okay, okay, so you kind of, you kind of shed your hand. I don't know if we, I mean, when you cast shade, you know, you say, we routinely, you know, reject these TERS applications. I think that the whole point of a TERS is to try to see, like, what we're getting better to go incentivize, make it better from that area.
Well, and that's why a three-eighty agreement could do the same thing.
My apologies, I wasn't finished speaking, that's my fault. I'm not conveying that.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, it's okay. But to that point, though, I don't think that you can equate, because we're rejecting these people, to, well, do we really need a TERS? Like, that's, that's the part that, you know, I don't, Nikki, I'm not gonna say equivocate the two for a better lack of term with that. You know, I think that, hey, listen, you got some applications for things that people see a TERS, people would not, how about you looking at it this way? People would not be applying if not for us having that TERS there. And I think that the TERS board has been a good steward for us. I mean, what I've loved about the TERS boards, particularly when I came as council, and I was like, TERS board, what do these people do? Who are these people, et cetera? You don't hear about them going off the rails. You don't hear about anything crazy coming there. They've been good stewards of the actual, you know, tax dollars in there. And I, you know, I don't see the need to, what is the old adage, don't, if it ain't broke, don't fix it?
And just for a data point, the only application we've received for TERS since Pecan District in two thousand and eighteen is North Point. It's not like we're getting applications on TERS.
There we go.
I would say one in five years is not often.
So if we're getting one application every seven years, why do we even have the TERS?
Sure, I'd be happy to go through the benefits of a TERS if you'd like, but it is for the, we need the increment, period. I would still have the TERS. You have various tools that you can use, and we'll tell you when we think a three-eighty might be most beneficial. For this, it was to grab money for, to have the increment.
So just to clarify...
And one may not be performing, let me be clear. You have a potential project not performing, and if we can look at how to remedy that, well, we are.
But we've also inoculated the city from that lack of performance, too.
It's quite a verb.
So, but, the mechanism of the TERS is to take the incremental value of a certain area and keep it in the certain area. Whereas the incremental value built elsewhere in the city goes to the general fund for the rest of the city, but the TERS stays only to benefit the TERS. So having a TERS does take tax money away from general fund services that could serve the entire city, just for clarification. Do I have that correct?
I would say, I would add, that is a correct statement. The missing part would be if you didn't do the TERS, would that land have developed, so therefore it would have been zero?
Well, and it's also important that the TERS agreement does not necessarily rebate at a hundred percent.
That's right, too. And a three-eighty, you could, you could also give it a haircut and make it whatever you want.
I just wanted to make sure I have, that's still a correct understanding.
That's assuming if there's increment.
So you both are right, and she just added to what you...
Yeah, no, thank you.
I mean, it's a tool to support economic development.
So if I was a developer and I had this fantastic project, and I came to the city, TERS three-eighty, which way would I go?
It depends on the geographical location, so...
So, right, the geographical location, you're right. So, never mind.
Although, to your point, you could still be in the TERS and ask for a three-eighty.
And a three-eighty. You could layer those tools. I'm not suggesting at the moment, just saying it's out there.
So it's another tool in the tool belt?
Correct.
So why take a tool out of the tool belt that we can leverage and utilize for the benefit of the citizens in this community?
Well, and let me add, I think that, to the point that we've only had one application in seven years, I'm not sure that's exactly correct. But I guess my position would be, is that there could potentially be, well, actually, we've had other developers that were interested in that, but there were other variables and elements to that development process that kept them from being able to utilize a TERS. And again, that's, those things change with the wind.
Wasn't the TERS fault, wasn't the city's fault.
Right.
I would just caution on taking away a tool, that's all. Because you have the right, as you've exercised, to vote yes or no on them.
Right, at the end of the day.
Every time. It comes to you.
I appreciate having the conversation for informational purposes and learning, so thank you for all the information on that.
I will also, if I may, just, the TERS allows us, we're inviting development. That's a message to developers to say, we're open for business, we'd like you to come in this area. So to me, it's also, it's a proactive way for a city to say, we'd like you to come.
As opposed to put a closer business sign?
That would, yeah, next meeting.
Do you think that discourages development in other areas because we don't have the same tool?
No, these developers all know what tools we have in our belt.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good. All right. Can we move on, Mr. Rogers?
I don't think we have any, anything else on that.
Yeah, we do. I was just wondering if we were through with this conversation, so. Seven D discussing consideration on possible amendments to the Code of Conduct and Ethics Training for Elected and Appointed Officials. Again, Mr. Rogers.
Yeah, the Code of Conduct, as we discussed at the retreat, the Code of Conduct by its plain language actually forbids us from having subcommittees. And I think we should look at at least that, and possibly a larger rewrite. And I would propose, the city manager mentioned that she had four or five codes of conduct from other cities on her file box. And I would propose that Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Holliday, Councilman Ruiz, and I make a committee to look at amendments to the Code of Conduct, including correcting, changing the Code of Conduct so that it actually allows us to have committees.
So is this a new subcommittee, Mr. Rogers?
Yes, that's my recommendation.
This is a new illegal subcommittee to do a subcommittee.
I don't know if they preclude subcommittees.
Collaboration.
No, not only that, I mean, I don't even know if, maybe even consider bringing this before a work session, not work, yeah, a lunch and learn. To get the input on everybody.
Why don't we start with that? I think it's a great idea to start as a lunch and learn.
I also, I don't know if it's appropriate to say, but there was two codes on the agenda today, and so I would...
That's the one we...
Yes, I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about, but I thought if we're gonna look at something, that we should do it holistically with both policies.
Right.
The PCDC.
Yeah, there's a Code of Conduct on the agenda tonight for the PCDC, which is inconsistent with the city Code of Conduct.
It's just...
We should harmonize those.
It's different, and then the city Code of Conduct includes all boards and commissions, which, to my reading, would also include PCDC. So it's like having two policies for the same board. So I just thought if we were going to, if council would like to look at it, to look at both policies.
To be fair, I believe the PCDC Code of Conduct, if I'm not mistaken, was written before the council passed the Code of Conduct that applied.
Yes.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I think I probably had a hand in writing both of those.
So there's the problem, there's the problem.
I just want to integrate, integrate.
Yeah, yeah.
Get a lawyer.
I would love to see it on a lunch and learn, so we can maybe have some...
Get a lawyer on it.
So you're gonna have a lunch and learn instead of a subcommittee?
For as a start.
Start, okay, so we don't continue to...
Starting with lunch and learn, and then looking at the various codes of conduct from other cities, probably a good educational tool.
Well, I didn't know Doug was setting us all up to fail and do illegal actions, so I agree.
So we can take that to a lunch and learn.
Just for clarity, I have the next few months of lunch and learns already booked. Could it come till, could it come in May?
That sounds great.
Like, y'all behave until, no, okay, May, thank you.
Would that be a negative repercussion on the PCDC?
You mean May twenty-twenty-seven, right?
I said, with delaying it until May, if we were going to incorporate both together in one, would that negatively affect the action that we would need to take?
Yeah, so we just delay action on the other one until...
Do we need to approve five I?
We need to go back to five I, but I'm not, Councilman Ryan, I'm, I believe confidently that they can be separate. I don't believe we need to delay one at this time.
There's no harm in moving forward and...
Well, but they're inconsistent right now.
They have been, you're correct.
We're not gonna make it any worse.
So I would just want to, I guess I would want to make sure that we're still going to look at... going to look at integrating or making them
Sure, we can, sure we can.
and amending at a later point in time.
Sure, we could. I agree.
And just, just for the record, the PCDC board did recently sign the code of ethics.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're in agreement with it.
Okay, so we're good with pushing the code of conduct discussion to lunch and learn whenever in May. And then that brings us back to 5I, which is approving the 2025 PCDC Board of Directors Ethics Policy for Annual Board Signature.
Well, it was pulled, so you want us to go through a presentation, correct? 5I?
Uh, no, I only, I pulled it for, for consistency discussion. That, that's it.
I, I think it's appropriate if, if we go ahead and approve it, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, and a second to approve 5I. And again, voice vote, Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Ruiz?
Yes.
Ms. Holliday?
Yes.
Mayor votes yes. Mr. Mateer?
Is it legal to say yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
You get a vote?
No.
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
He said no.
He said no.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Doug is trying to get us in jail.
I believe that concludes our agenda. Is that correct?
Well, I thought we were coming here later.
All right.
We're adjourned.
I know, I know.